Andy, while we're waiting, I did just start the recording, just so people are aware.
Andy, this is again, do we get any more information? Because it looks like the Senate's going to vote on this tomorrow.
I haven't heard anything about that. I just know the timelines are coming up. So we wanted to at least start the discussion. And I think that we, if I'm understanding things correctly, we kind of needed a decision. Do you have any more information on what exactly they're voting on?
Yeah, they're deciding tomorrow, the Senate and the House. And I have another email from New Hampshire Municipal Association. They're going to decide that they are going to allow the 72-hour limit, suspend the 72-hour limit on postponing Senate Bill, excuse me, SB2's deliberation session. But we're not SB2. So they're going to go into more detail. I don't have a copy of the actual bill, but I know it is going to be voted on in the morning.
Okay. So I guess, yeah, I was going to say, we can ask Dean if he is aware of that and how that might affect any decision that we make tonight.
So can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time talking with you this evening. Obviously, we don't know the outcome of the action that the legislature will take tomorrow. And any decision you make probably needs to be subject to review of the final product. And if anything, the focus of that legislation probably is, as I believe Ann suggested, going to address some of the open questions that exist more for the SB2 towns and school districts. Pembroke has the advantage in the sense that you've had a traditional annual meeting for your district for time immemorial. And so this bill, the original bill, House Bill 1129, has passed, applied to both the past fiscal year cycle and also your meeting coming up for March of 2021. Andy's accurately described the process. Probably the most significant concern you have with your traditional meeting format is that you really need to have a crystal ball to predict whether or not COVID-19 will stay static, whether or not we'll have further resurgence, or there will be any other developments in that regard. If you go with your traditional meeting option, Andy's correct that you'll need to very carefully develop a detailed protocol as to how you proceed with that meeting. There is not a cap at this point from the governor's office on assembly, but there are a number of criteria that apply that will make it very challenging to set up a traditional meeting format where you truly get the historic interactivity that has existed in the Pembroke School District. You also are looking to maximize your representation at an annual meeting. And so certainly you will leave open to question whether or not the meeting is truly accessible. So for example, those who are at risk health-wise may have to choose or make an assessment as to whether or not the protocol developed by the school district is sufficiently safe such that they are able to attend the meeting. If you go with the alternative meeting format, probably the most significant thing that we need to be aware of is that the governing body has a lot more responsibility with that alternative format. It consists really not of two steps, but four components that are very significant. The first one really starts before you meet at all, and that's the quality of your notice. It's going to be really important that as a board, and we'd work with you and with your administration to do this, that you get proper notice, all the citizens, and ideally do it once. And the reason for that is that if you get it right, the citizens can read that notice and know each step in advance as to what will happen. So our recommendation is that if you go down the pathway of the alternative annual meeting, that your first notice, which has to be mailed out, and this is very significant, to every registered voter, not to the occupants of 12 Pembroke Drive, but instead to every, every registered voter via US mail. So you want that notice to inform everybody of the pertinent dates for your first and second meeting and to begin to provide information with regard to the warrant. And you're also going to end up having to do a second posting ultimately of the warrant that goes forward. And then you're going to adopt, if you follow this model, a drive, essentially a drive-through voting model. Now, the seeds of this alternative meeting really were sown experimentally in the way the both school district administered their meeting. They actually followed this format before it was truly in the law, if you will, and then subsequently it was codified in the law. Your first meeting is called an information session. You would at that meeting inform the citizens of how this process will work. And then secondly, the board will begin to discuss and inform the citizens of potential warrant articles. And I think it's probably very helpful for the citizens to see a sample format of what the board is contemplating by way of warrant articles. And the reason for that is quite simple because after that first meeting, where the articles have been reviewed and explained, one week later, you're going to have a second meeting. And in between that first and second meeting, you're going to solicit and provide avenues for comment from the citizens as to these proposed articles. And then unlike a traditional meeting, either SB2, a deliberative, or an annual meeting, the governing body, the board, is actually going to take those comments, take that feedback, engage in its own discussion, deliberation, and debate in order to create the final warrant. In the process of doing that, it will answer questions and consider and address the comments from the public. There is no prohibition against allowing public comment at the second meeting. And indeed, the board could choose to allow that if it's so desired. There's no requirement. But out of that, you are then going to create your final warrant. And that final warrant will need to be properly posted. And then you'll need to set up a process for drive-by, drive-through voting. Now, this entire process comes with one big question mark. And the first question mark is, will the voters approve of the process? And so if you elect this process, the first question on your warrant won't be a bond issue. It'll actually be, do the voters approve of this process? And if they endorse the process, then the vote, the subsequent votes will all become your annual meeting votes. If the citizens show up through the drive-through voting but do not endorse the process, then you are given two choices. And choice number one is convene again to adopt an operating budget. Choice number two is, in essence, to declare a sort of quasi-default budget in the sense that declaring that the last year's adopted budget, not including any separate articles, would become the ensuing year's budget. So that's the quick fly-through in terms of process. The benefit, obviously, of this process is more health-driven. The annual meeting process comes with the potential for an increased health risk, would of course allow for the more real-time interactivity. So as a board, fundamentally, I think you make the decision which process is most likely to engage the citizens and get the feedback that the district wants from the citizens with regard to its budget and its articles, any collective bargaining agreements that need to be approved and the like. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions from the board members with regard to this process. The bill reference, and you can read it, it's available on the, on the general court website, is House Bill 1129 out of the 2020 session. And as I think we mentioned at the beginning, there could be at any time further guidance issued by the legislature, but it may primarily deal with SB2, I think.
Are there questions for Dean?
Andy, this is Ann. What percentage of the voters have to approve of this process?
So that's a great question, and the statute is silent as to what percentage of voters. And indeed, as, as we have heard anecdotally even before the pandemic, there were some towns and districts with, for example, SB2 towns, where you'd have a handful of people show at the deliberative and approve a warrant. And then you'd have any range of voters from very low to very high. But there is no set quorum requirement for approval. You need a majority. It isn't a, isn't a three-fifths or supermajority. You need a majority to approve the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, I did have a second question. So they have the option of two votes. So if they vote on a default budget, that would be the current budget plus any expenditures that are written in by contract, such as the teacher's contract?
So Andy, I assume you're looking to me to answer that question? Thanks. So it's a little bit, you know, and God bless the legislature. It's hard to write a law for every, you know, for two types of, if you will, annual meetings, SB2 and an annual meeting. But the way it would work is question number one would be on the ballot. Citizens could vote to approve or disapprove of the process we were engaging. And then they certainly could and should, you know, they shouldn't stop. Let's say a citizen disapproves of the process, they shouldn't necessarily stop there. They should still proceed to vote on the articles because they don't know whether or not their approval/disapproval vote is going to be in the majority or in the minority. So citizens are well-informed to show up, vote in the drive-through voting, make their vote as to whether or not they approve the alternative process, and regardless of how they choose, proceed to vote on all articles. If the process is not approved, and probably although the law is not crystal clear, you could have a situation where the process is approved and the budget is not approved, right? Paradoxically, you could have that. Or you could have a situation where the process is approved and the budget is not approved, right? You could have any of those permutations. If you don't get a budget, the closest and I think most careful reading of the statute is that then the governing body has a choice to make. They can either take a single run at another meeting. And it's a little unclear when they say convene a meeting in the statute before September 1 to adopt an operating budget, what that would look like. Would it be a repetition of the alternative process? Or would it be a traditional meeting? That's not clear from the statute. But you have that option to go forward on an operating budget only, or the governing body could vote to adopt the previous year's operating budget. But there is no language in the statute with regard to the default process. When you adopt that last year's budget, if you read it literally, it just says, that is the budget. It doesn't have that typical default of up or down or adjustments. And that might be something that hopefully the legislature could clarify because it would make more sense for it to say, elect to deem that the meeting has adopted the previous year's operating budget article, which would essentially be in the traditional SB2 format, a default budget. Now, we also know that in our district with an annual meeting, historically and traditionally, nobody leaves until you have a budget. It's really, in our annual meeting format, there's no such thing as a default. You stay all night, you recess the meeting to another day until you have an operating budget. And if the citizens in an annual meeting format want to create the equivalent of a default budget, they amend and vote for that budget. So I hope I've answered your question probably too much.
Oh, no, no, perfect. Thank you.
Jean, question, thoughts, opinion?
Yeah. And got one of, the other question I have is, I had seen a certain possibility that the annual meeting could be postponed, that, you know, even as far in the future as May. Is that something that's still on the radar?
So I think that goes to May is probably referring to those districts that in the first instance traditionally had that later meeting. And we know under SB2, there'd be different ones where you would hold your deliberative and hold your official ballot voting. And there aren't many districts, but there are some districts that work on that May schedule. Now, there is nothing in this statute that explicitly requires that you do the alternative process in accord with the schedule that applies to the annual meeting schedule. It doesn't explicitly require that. And so I know the NHMA's advice, of course, has been that if historically you've tried to coordinate voting with your town, then you'd want to do that as well. And so they advise that in their, their instruction that districts and towns try to stay with their traditional calendar. The reasons that calendar exists really are to enable the district to adopt its budget, file its appropriate MS forms with the Department of Revenue Administration, and begin the process you need to timely set your tax rates for that appropriation. So we know the longer we take to hold the meeting, the more pressure we put on that process. And so to directly answer your question, it is possible that there could be a different date for voting. It is possible that there could be, and will be, different dates for these alternative meetings because you're not an SB2 town anyways. Those might be very well and will be different than the date of an annual meeting. So the other thing I would recommend is that you do have some discussion with the town as to what they're doing so that, you know, if you've got two different municipal entities, both opting for alternative meetings, you want to be careful that you don't create a conflict for the citizens where you've inadvertently scheduled meeting one and meeting two, terminously with the town, and now the citizens are trying to make a decision which one to go to. And so that would be one thing that Jean's question really prompts in my mind as being an important discussion. So if, for example, the board decides, does the governing body, that they'd like to go forward with the alternative process, I would recommend that you select dates subject to discussion with the town to make sure that between you and the town you don't create conflict with your number one and number two meeting dates.
Andy, I have a question.
Sure.
Does the Budget Committee and the school board need to be present at each one of these meetings?
So the legislation, once again, is not clear on that. And so, for example, the opening part of the legislation talks about the fact that at the first and second meeting, you could either have your board chair or your moderator preside over that meeting. To the extent that the Municipal Budget Committee has participated in that, in that process, as I'm sure they have, I think it would be valuable to have them there because they are going to be able to explain their rationale with regard to the operating budget. But what is a little bit different here is that it's the governing body that's going to determine the final form of the articles, which would deviate a bit from the historic approach where, if you'll recall, the Municipal Budget Committee sets the number that goes forward on the operating budget. That just seems to be something the legislature didn't clearly address other than to say that the governing body makes that decision as the final format for the article. I know historically Pembroke has a pretty good track record of reaching an accord with the Budget Committee over what your number will be. And if not, there are friendly amendments and discussion that would take place in that process. But I would say that while the legislation is silent, there would be benefit to the extent that the Municipal Budget Committee has been involved in the operating budget to, as the governing body, invite the committee to make a presentation to the citizens as to the derivation of their numbers. And then the board could consider a debate and deliberate on those as part of that number two process, number two meeting process.
Thank you. Just my last question. Would it be beneficial if the school and the town did it on the same days? Because all the residents are there? Or is that not eligible to be done that way?
I don't think there's any conflict because you will create a, I assume you're asking about drive-through voting. As to informational meetings, that might just be a little bit of a scheduling challenge. You'd need to make sure you allocated sufficient time for what would in essence be four separate informational meetings. But with regard to the voting, if the town elects the alternative process as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume your town also has an annual meeting, correct?
Yes.
Those nods. If the town opts for drive-through voting as well, I don't see any reason why, and the law has always allowed the polling process to be coordinated, where there would be ballots for the district vote and ballots for the town's vote. And there's no reason why citizens could not exercise their franchise that I'm aware of as to both at the same time through drive-through voting.
Andy, I'm not sure if you had a discussion with David yet, but the selectmen are pretty much going to stick to the schedule that we always do in March. So that might just be information that the school would need when they're deciding on when to send this information out.
When you say sticking to the schedule in March, are they're planning an in-person town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Because of the size, the number of the people that show up.
Yeah, the school meeting's always bigger than the town meeting.
Right, and we could probably social distance in the auditorium. But I believe that David was talking about having like a subcommittee. So a couple of people from the school board with David and the selectmen, just as a quick meeting to see what, you know, what everybody's planning to do.
Okay. I haven't heard anything from them about that, but we have NBC on Thursday night. And then I think we need to talk a little bit more, either now or later tonight, about how we want to coordinate with them. We could, you know, we could invite the chair and the vice chair to one of our meetings, or a couple of us could go to a selectman meeting. But we need to start coordinating in some fashion. Dean, I had a question, and not, not to put you on the spot too much, but as far as if our intention is to, to stick to the general timeline so that it kind of coincides with what the town is doing and do these virtual information sessions and the drive-through voting, I guess I'm wondering if we need to make a decision tonight. A, is that prudent, knowing that the legislature's going to talk some tomorrow? And I guess the other thing is, you know, there's only three of us here. So I'm wondering if we can, if we can push this two weeks to make a decision, or if it would be better to make a decision now and revisit if we have to.
So while I think two weeks would probably leave you far too tight, I think there may be some wisdom to, I hate to suggest this to you because it always means more public service, but another, another brief meeting of the board, perhaps taking an initial consensus or poll indicating that subject to the outcome of the legislature's action, if there's going to be new information forthcoming, that the board will begin the process, if it's going to go with the alternative process, that's probably the pressing decision. If you're going to stick with the traditional meeting process, there will be a lot of work necessary to develop a protocol for safety. And I don't mean to minimize that. That will take a lot of work to ensure that you design and do that properly. But the pressing decision, I believe, is if you're going to do the alternative process because you're looking at two, two meetings that have to be noticed, want to notice in advance your first session, right? And that's, quote, "at least seven days prior." And so now we're looking at, when you don't count action days, we are looking at 16, 17 days.
About nine weeks.
We've got to clear to get this process done. So I would say you could take a week and have a meeting in a week. It's just when you move out two, you start to put, I think, some pressure on yourself as a board. If you think you're leaning towards the alternative process, we could probably alleviate some of that pressure by beginning to work on the form of the notice, which will have to be fairly comprehensive. And there are mechanical issues such as working with the registrar of the checklist to ensure that you have a full, full role in order to mail these notices out to every registered voter in the, in the district slash town. So I don't think you have to make a decision tonight in order to, in other words, you're not, you know, after tonight, you're not too late. But I would encourage you to make a prompt decision if you're going to go with the alternative format.
Gotcha. Okay. I guess we should have some discussion with the board here. Are there any questions for Dean before we talk about that a little bit?
Andy, I just have one. We have over 5,000 voters, registered voters, 5,000-plus now. And how quickly, or what's the length of time that we have to get them this written notice?
So I can answer that, Andy, if you want. So the statute requires that we have to have mailed out this notice seven days prior to the meeting. And in my opinion, if you're going to mail notice, typically you allow three days for mailing. Now, I think the legislation could be interpreted as saying, I drop it in the box seven days early. But the statute says at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting notice. So if you were doing this in a way that I think would be best practice, you'd actually be dropping it in the box 10 days prior to your first meeting. And that would mean that with three days for mailing cycle, the citizens would actually have it in their hands a full seven days prior to the first meeting.
Thank you.
Great. So I guess, Ann and Jean, if I can get general feelings from you, I'm, I'm really kind of weighing whether or not we want to take action on this tonight. I feel it's important. I don't like the idea of doing it without two of our other members here. But I think if the three of us were in agreement, that would be a majority of the full board anyway. I don't know. Personally, I'm leaning towards the, the alternative method. You know, I don't, my personal assessment of the COVID situation based on what's happened over the past six weeks and a possible new strain that's hit our country that could do whatever, you know, the cases are continuing to spike. And I, you know, I don't want to be trying to predict that that's all going to be in a better situation in a month and a half. I also know that, you know, the attendance at these meetings, while Ann's right, it's definitely higher at the school meeting than it is at the town meeting, it's still generally a couple hundred, a few hundred people on a normal year at best. And I know we've had a couple of school board meetings where we've had 250-plus on this thing, and it hasn't seemed to slow down. So I think it can handle it. I think that, I don't, I don't see using the remote solution as a hindrance to attendance, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We've had, definitely had attendance from lots of different categories, whether that be age or opinions on our matters or whatever. I feel like we've had a pretty good across-the-board representation at some of these meetings. And to me, I think that's the most important thing. I want to pick what's going to have the best chance of the most people being involved in the process. And I personally, I think that's, that's doing it virtually at this point. But I'm anxious to hear what, what you guys have to say.
Jean, you want to go first?
Gee, thanks. At this point, I really want to have Amy and April here also before I make a decision on this. And with the town going the traditional format, I think there also needs, before we make a final decision, we need to have a discussion with the town, like Ann suggested with the subcommittee, before we make any decisions. like Ann suggested with the subcommittee, before we make any decisions. Personally, it's, you know, it's up in the air. I mean, I much prefer the format, our traditional format. But if we're going to exclude anyone because either they're at risk or they're, you know, taking extra precautions because of COVID, you know, that pushes us to the alternative meeting. I don't want to exclude anybody absolutely. But until we can have further discussions with our other board members and the town, I'm not really willing to make a decision at this point in time.
Thanks.
Andy, well, this is Ann, but I feel that we need to make a decision this evening, only because I know the length of time that we need to get this properly processed together. And so, you know, the mailings alone is going to be a huge undertaking. I would like to suggest that on Thursday's meeting, I can get in touch with the town administrator tomorrow morning or send him an email tonight and ask him to have the moderator attend the budget meeting. So we could have a sidebar. Because I think the sooner we get this decided, the better for us. Otherwise, we'd be probably pushing it out. If we're eligible, we'd be pushing it out to at least April. Because nine weeks is not enough time to get this all slam dunk.
I agree. A couple of quick concerns. I double check, please, but I think that David said he's going to be unavailable for Thursday's meeting. I'm, I'm, we're going to host it on the school side to help out. And then, oh wait, there was something else. Oh, I just wanted to note, because that was a good point you brought up. I believe that it was sort of short notice, but I do believe Patty invited our moderator to this meeting. And I don't see him on the, I've been, keep checking the T section to see if he's around to get some input on this, but I don't see him yet. So it also, you know, wasn't on the agenda this early. So hopefully he's not planning on doing this later. But I do think getting Tom involved is a good idea.
Right. Andy, do you want to give directions on how to unmute yourself on the phone? Because Tom may have called in.
Okay, yeah. So Tom Seraphin, if you're out there, I see there are a few phone numbers. So I think it's star six. If you happen to be listening and you want to chime in on this or ask us or Dean any questions, we certainly invite you to do that. And that's at any time. If you can hear me, Tom, just go ahead and interrupt. But yeah, Ann, I'm similarly concerned with the timeline. I'd like to make a decision tonight. I guess if, if you two are amenable, we could try to, you know, put together another one, one topic meeting for sometime next week and see if there's a night that all five of us can get together. If we, if we want to involve Amy and April. And then I think, you know, what we have to do then is, first of all, hope that there's actually a night. And second of all, do whatever coordination with the town that we possibly can before then. You know, it's definitely advantageous, I think, to get all parties involved, you know, get their opinions on the table. But like Ann said, it's also, I think there's a significant time crunch here too, to do this in a reasonable way. So.
Yes. Well, you know that, you know, the selectmen will meet at any time. So even if, even if I just go as the chair, you know, have a discussion with, you know, have David, you, probably Patty, and, you know, the moderator or as many school board members, you know, we'll do it at a drop of a hat because.
Do you guys have a regular meeting on Monday anyway?
We have, no, ours, ours isn't until the 19th, which is the same as yours because of the holiday. We had one last night, but we've discussed it at the last two meetings that we're ready to go with the, with the, with the normal date. And we've had discussion with Josh on what the gym would actually hold and the auditorium would actually hold.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. If you, if you don't mind reaching out to David just to see what his schedule is like, if you could copy me on that, that'd be great. I'll start. I, if, I think there's a consensus here. We want to try to throw together a brief meeting for next week for the board, if possible. And, and we can hash it out with the five of us. I, I guess I would encourage the two of you that are here. If you have any more questions for Dean right now, go ahead and ask him, or else we can submit through email. But I don't, I don't picture asking him to join us again unless absolutely necessary.
Andy, this is Ann. Can I just ask a question? If, if Amy is able to join us later in the meeting, can we take the topic up again?
If, if we have time, I, I got a lot of requests about the order of this meeting. And Amy is particularly hoping to be able to contribute to the, the school, the instructional model discussion. So I, and I, that's usually a long discussion. So we'll see, we'll see. We'll try, definitely.
I just thought it might save another meeting, but.
Yeah, I would love, I would love to save another meeting.
So should I send you the information to David? Should I also attend on Thursday?
If you'd like to, yeah. Thursday's going to be, you know, we'll have, it's going to be a longer one. That's, Amber will be with me and it's a full presentation, well, overview presentation of the budget for the first time to them. So it'll be a little bit longer meeting, but the more the merrier.
I would just point, there's a lot of feedback. Okay. I would just point out that next week, we had already tried to schedule a negotiations meeting and we were down to only two nights that people were available. So I'm just worried if we aren't able to get all five of you together next week, what the plan would be going forward.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, it sounds to me like Dean is saying that, that if there's any inkling that we might be leaning towards that alternative process, that even if we don't come out of tonight with a decision, we should, you know, begin the process of getting the work done on that notification. Is there, I know Jean, it sounded like you were kind of on the fence. Is there enough interest in the alternative process that we should be kind of starting down that road as far as, as the communication being developed? Trying to phrase it in a way that we're not taking a vote.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if time is of the essence, if we're not able to delay of, you know, our, the alternative meeting, then I would say, yes, we should get, give direction to start the communication process. Aside from that, again, I'm not, especially since the legislature's meeting tomorrow, I'm not comfortable with saying yes or no to either one. But to keep the process moving, I'd be amenable to that.
Okay. Ann?
Yes, I think that we need to continue with the process. And just as we're talking timeframes, the amount of time it's going to take just for us to get these printed because everybody else is doing their, their meeting at the same time.
Right.
So we are very crunched for time.
So, I mean, I don't know what you're all thinking. And Patty, I, you know, I don't know if you have to be there for that meeting or not. I might be able to squeeze in like a Saturday morning meeting. I just, I would ask that if we're going to, if we're going to try to get a vote sometime after tonight, that we try to be as flexible as possible with schedules. I hope, you know, I would hope it's not more than a half hour, 45 minutes. If this is the only thing we're going to take up. I think on that meeting, we could allow one public comment session ahead of our discussion, just in case there's anybody listening tonight. We've got a fair number of people on the phone that have an opinion. Because again, I think hearing all opinions so that we have lots of information is good. But I think we can keep that meeting fairly brief. So hopefully we can, we can squeeze something in. But I, it sounds like, I think we should start that process of developing that communication. All right, any, any, go ahead.
I just want to say, so I sent Dave Joden an email to find, you know, what we outlined this evening. So again, the, the selectmen will meet at any time that you need. So, you know, we'll, we'll be available if we have to. After we decide, you know, if we're going to go forward, then we're ready.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for Dean before we let him go?
I just want to say I appreciate it because I know it's, it's a tough time of year.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, everyone. I'm sure Patty will keep me posted or Andy in terms of what you discussed. And I think that by moving forward with sort of the prototype for the notice, you'll be able to turn this around even with this delay in a way that won't put undue pressure on the board or the district. So I think I've got your, your instruction. We'll move forward on that and wait to, wait to hear from you finally as to what the board would like to do. I would just encourage you that if you do end up opting to go with the traditional format, there is a lot of work to be done to do that correctly to reduce risk. And that in and of itself will not be something that you would wait until a week or two before that meeting to engage in a pretty robust discussion about how you're going to safely attain that. The only other thing I would add is that there is a risk, of course, that if COVID-19 turns with a greater surge, that our ability to do a traditional meeting could dissipate as well. So the only other thing I would say is the alternative format, so long as it exists and the law gives you a surer choice in terms of then scrambling if things go in a worse direction in the future. So with that, I'll say goodbye to all of you. And thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the questions. And I do have to tell you that all my answers were based on my years of implementing this new law. You know, in other words, this is brand new. We're trying to give you our best read of what the legislature intended. And maybe as Ann notes, they'll give us more guidance in a day or two. And I'll keep you up to speed on that as well. I'm sure Ann will too. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Bye y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. So thanks for letting us get that out of the way first thing. I'll move back to agenda review. Patty, you had a couple of quick things, I think?
Yes, we need to revise number 15. The Pembroke Support Staff Association contract is not ready tonight. That should be the MOA for the Education Association. So it's the memo of agreement that we've been working on with the teachers. And then Josh has a facility update that he needs to provide to the board at some point in the meeting.
Okay. I guess we'll just add it under six, six G. We'll do facilities update. Okay, agenda item number three is minutes, and we don't have any ready for tonight, so we can go past that one. So that brings us to agenda item number four, which is our first public comment section. Try to keep it close to 15 minutes. We've got a number of people on the phone tonight. If you, if you have something to contribute, please try to be as brief as you can to allow the most number of people to speak. In case this is your first time joining us, please use the raise hand function if you're on your computer. If you're on your phone, just sit tight until we get towards the end of the public comments section. And I will provide instructions, give you a time where you can unmute yourself and state your name. And we can kind of go through the phone lines if there's anybody on the phone that wants to speak. So if you have something to contribute, go ahead and hit that raise hand button and Mr. Morris will recognize you. Tim Girardi? Go ahead, Tim.
Hey, everyone. I hope you all had a good holiday season. I'm excited to be back. And just in order to keep things quick, I'll save more comments for, at the end. But definitely looking forward to the full return to school planning portion of the meeting and hearing what are some of the thoughts and, and ideas around that.
Thanks, Tim. I'm not seeing any others right now, so we'll deviate for a second and go to the phones. So if you are called in on your phone and you've got something that you want to contribute, if you hit star six on your phone, I believe that will unmute you. And then just go ahead and state your name. If a couple of people talk at the same time, I'll try to pick out a name to recognize. And whoever that's not, just mute again and I'll call on you in a second. So if you're called in, go ahead and hit star six and let me know if you've got something you want to contribute. And if you're not on the phone and you're still on the fence, go ahead and raise your hand if you want to speak. Okay, I see one unmuted.
Yes, this is Lauren Dwyer from Fourth Range Road.
Go ahead.
Again, yes, thank you all so much for just doing an amazing job. I, I, I just, I don't have anything to add. And just when you're speaking, please continue to take the staff and our students' safety into concern. Listen to the nurses. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for working so hard.
Thanks, Lauren. Anybody else on the phone, you can go ahead and star six it. Anybody else on the computer, go ahead and raise your hand. I'm not seeing either one right now, so I'll give it just another minute or two. Oh, I saw, Mark, I saw your hand for a minute. Mark, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, Mark Dumont, Donut Drive. I was just, I was just wanting to know, we have this vaccine being distributed right now. And I wanted to know how much that's going to play into the decision for you guys? Where you guys are comfortable enough to let the students return to school in full, not just hybrid? And if so, how many weeks would it take for preparation? Because I, because I've heard you guys talked before, like you guys would need time to prepare. So I think it's time to start that conversation. Because, because we know right now, was it first responders and, and people in assisted living are getting the vaccine first. But also, I also know over the next couple of weeks, I know people that aren't assisted living that are, that are older that are getting the vaccine too. So I want to know how that's going to play into the decision for everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We're, we're going to have a discussion on that a little bit later tonight, so we can hit that. Any other hands or unmutes? I think Lauren, you may still be unmuted.
I just unmuted myself. I wanted to thank Mark Dumont for his comments.
Lauren, Lauren, sorry, I got to cut you off there. We, we got to, citizens need to address the board. We can't have comments back and forth between citizens on, on our public comment sections.
Andy, thank you for being fair.
Yep. All right. I don't see any others. I think I still see Mark's hand. I still see Lauren's unmuted, but I don't see any new ones. So I think we're going to go ahead. Oh, no, that was the same one. Sorry. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five then, consent agenda. And it looks like we have something.
You have one consent item that is a staff request. So I thought you may want to have a non-public session and then come back to that.
Sounds good to me. So if there's, that's the only one, then we will move on to the meet, the meeting. And I think Amy said that she was going to try to be here right around 7:30. So she might luck out. This might actually work out for her. If anybody, Dan, if you happen to see Amy join, if you could just wave at me or something, so I know she's here and I can ask her if she's present and alone, I guess. So agenda item six, immediate business, letter A, is the school instructional model. So we'll let Patty take it away and take a quick look at the matrix and see where we're at with those items.
So before we talk about the matrix, I think it's important to remember that we are in remote learning right now. The nurses have done their very best, as have the administration, to encourage people to fill out their school screenings, both staff and students. I think the average among our school is probably somewhere between 45 to 50% participation. So it's really difficult to judge where everyone is at. And, you know, understandably, parents are probably thinking their children aren't in school, so they don't need to do the screening. But it's really, really important for us to have that information. And it's going to become even more important in the next week for us to have a really good handle on how many students are either quarantined for any of, any of those reasons that you would be quarantined versus also. versus also how many are isolated because they've either had COVID or someone in their family has COVID. So that information is going to become really important. I did leave us in the same categories that you were presented with at the last meeting because, again, we've been remote and we've been on break and we don't really know for sure all of the answers in the first several columns. But I did update, the Merrimack County numbers were at 699.4 per 100,000. And right now, the active cases in Pembroke as of the website today was 21. And I did update all of the counties on the second page, so you could see the numbers per 100,000 for each of the counties in the state. The nurses did update the numbers that they had as of today available to them. We, I put the spreadsheet, or Kathy put the spreadsheet in the drive for you to look at. If you'd like one of the nurses to go through the numbers to discuss them out loud for the public, they can do that, or you could just review it and we'll post it publicly. So whatever your pleasure is.
Andy, this is Ann. Could I just ask a quick question? I just want to be clear. Patty, what you're saying is that residents, the parents are not telling you their temperature or the parents aren't telling you if they have to be quarantined, if there's a situation in their home?
No, it's not that they're not telling us something, but the daily screenings give us that information and without the students being in school, the families aren't necessarily filling out those screenings, which is where we get our information from. So we just need to encourage people to really start doing those screenings faithfully again so that we have that information.
Do we, do we have like a ballpark on how many screenings we are getting at the moment? So we can say, hey, you know, let's up our numbers?
Yeah, I mean, if you average the schools together, maybe 50%, I would say.
Thank you.
Allison, go ahead.
Allison, do you have more data from PA?
You're still muted.
Okay, sorry. So in reviewing our data at PA just by ourselves, we have approximately almost 1,000 individuals between staff, supportive staff, students, et cetera, that are participating in the daily assessments. To give an example, today we had 332 complete the assessment. So that's not even half, not even close. It's difficult to make any kind of, you know, or to present any kind of data based on this, you know, assessment completion or lack of and, you know, the reporting by parents, staff, et cetera. So it's, at this time, I feel like, you know, what can we do to encourage students and staff? I will say that just prior to the onset of our holiday break, I did put out an email just to see how it will work to students, to all students and staff, saying, hey, look, guys, you know, I really need your participation in this because it helps us make decisions for the future, on what model we may be able to go back on. And when I did that, I ended up, by the end of the day, increasing the numbers probably by half in what was initially started at the beginning of the day. So it did make a difference, but whether or not, you know, really that's realistic to do every single day for me to send out an email when, you know, my principal headmaster has done that himself. I could do it as well, but I just don't know how much is too much at this point. I think we've conveyed how important it is for this to continue, even though we are in the remote model, so that we can make decisions going forward and having that information to do so. If anybody has any other suggestions, I would gladly, you know, listen to them.
Thanks, Allison. I just want to, before we go any further, I see that Amy has joined us. So I will quickly ask Amy, are you present and alone?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. You made it just in time too for the instructional model discussion, so.
Great.
So does anybody have any questions for Allison while we've got her?
Andy, this is Ann. Is there just a different tool that the parents could use? If they don't want to go through, I don't know how many questions are on the assessment. If they just want to go through and say, you know, haven't been exposed, if they just do that daily? I'm thinking if, they might be more incentive sized if it's shorter?
I have, I have to say, sorry, Andy. I have to say that this assessment in reviewing other types of apps, programs, et cetera, when we, you know, initially took this on, the convenient care assessment is as quick as it possibly can be. I mean, literally, it probably takes less than a minute to complete. So I don't think that there is any other program out there that would be more user-friendly than the one that we have. It, you know, I instituted at PA, an automatic email to all students, parents, et cetera, that, you know, initiates them in the morning when they look at it to say, you know, click this link and it will go right to the assessment. They don't even have to type in anything, et cetera. They just press a button, go to the link, fill out the assessment, like I said, which takes probably half a minute, and it is completely user-friendly. So I don't know where the barriers exist with this. I really don't.
Were they asked to take it over the school vacation?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that didn't help either. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo what Allison said. From a parent perspective, I'm assuming it looks the same at PA as it does for my middle schoolers. And yeah, it was, it was, you click the link, it's like five yes or no questions. You just hit the buttons and it's, I think your assessment of 30 or 45 seconds is right on. It's, I was super happy with it as a parent. Okay, if there's no other direct questions for Allison, I guess we should get into a discussion to set the stage. I think where we're at, I took some time to review our prior motions and whatnot. And I think the point that we're at right now, you know, as a default, is that we would be, I should have pulled up my calendar so I could get the date right, but that the day after Martin Luther King Day, so the 19th, we would be returning to school in a hybrid model. So I think that's the position that we're starting from as a default, just because it's been a while since we've all talked. So I guess I'll open it up to the board and get thoughts and opinions and kind of how we want to move forward from here.
Thanks, Andy. This is Amy. Can I start? So I am in favor of going with the recommendation from the administration to transition to hybrid starting on the 19th. But I am also in favor, not tonight, but moving forward pretty quickly to start to see if there's anything better or different that we could do. You know, I have ideas that I'm not sure if they fall, land in like the doable zone or the crazy zone. Like, can we send the kindergarteners and the seniors to full-time school for just February? You know, just some sort of alternative to what we're doing. But I just don't think we're, I don't think the administration has, you know, had enough time to think about some sort of alternative setup like that. So I don't think it's fair to, for us to hash that out tonight. So I would move that we transition to hybrid for what is essentially the last two weeks. My calendar is over to my left. From January 19th through to January 29th, which is that Friday.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for discussion?
This is Ann. I'll second.
All right, so discussion around a motion to return to hybrid for at least two weeks.
This is Ann and I appreciate Amy's motion. And I also appreciate the, you know, thinking outside the box. My whole thought for this whole transition of what we have been going through, these students have been going through is, you know, how do we teach the kids who can't write? You know, how do we teach them that on the computer? How do we teach them to read, you know, on the computer? So I really appreciate Amy's thoughts. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks. Gene?
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of going in line with the, you know, the motion we made however many weeks ago now, going back hybrid on the 19th. But I think Amy's motion does, you know, keep us looking at it. And I, I want to spend time on it, but I don't want to spend too much time on it until we get a handle on things as far as the spread goes. Looking at the numbers that the nurses provided for the last month is significant. As I was sitting here, I got another alert now message from Hill School that a staff member had tested positive. And, you know, concerns me, the staffing is what concerns me most of all. I believe, you know, the kids that are going to school are going to be safe and we're trying to do our best to minimize exposure to, you know, all students and staff. I don't see it change realistically based on the numbers of people that are getting vaccinated. You know, Mark Dumont brought that up. I can appreciate that. I was hoping for more. But I don't see much more from, I think there was a, came out today that the state was looking at getting down out of the first responders and those in long-term care facilities and the ones that are most susceptible to it. You know, we're looking at May even. Now, I don't want those kids, I want these kids back in school full-time. I think January 29th is a little optimistic, but I'd be willing to support that for now to be looking at it.
Thanks, Gene. Go ahead, Allison.
I just, thank you, Gene, for your perspective. I really appreciate that. I just want to throw out there at this point that the numbers that I submitted today were skewed. I feel as though they're not an appropriate representation of what's really going on within the community. The governor's report today was more specific to what reality is within our state. We are over 10% in a total population of positive COVID numbers. We have not peaked from our Christmas travel and community exposures until about the third week to fourth week of January. I absolutely would love to see our students back in a hybrid model as soon as possible, but I honestly don't feel it's realistic. I think it's something that's an ongoing assessment and evaluation by all of us to look at those numbers and to see whether it's safe or not to do so. So, you know, thus going forward, I feel like it's a volatile situation. It's going to change day by day in the next couple of weeks until we peak from the Christmas holidays. And then I think we will be able to be, you know, more appropriate in our thoughts about going forward. So just please keep that in mind that we don't have a lot of communication from the community at this point. If I looked at my numbers that I presented today, I'd like to triple and quadruple them because I feel that that's probably more realistic at this point. We were going on a 10% by community in the past as far as population positive COVID. But now we were looking at a state that is over 10% in its COVID positive cases. So I just, you know, I can't help it as a health professional to look on the cautious side of things and the most, you know, safe and protective way of moving forward for all of us. So that's basically my input on this and I would appreciate if you'd all, you know, just put that into thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll echo what a lot of people have said so far. I would love to see the kids all the way back in the building at some point this year, if that seems realistic and safe and possible at some point. I do, I would support this motion as far as returning to hybrid after Martin Luther King like we had planned. I do have some trepidation and I think that we may be, at least for a couple of weeks, and what Allison's saying, I think, kind of goes along with this, that we still may be in a position like we were before the holidays where, you know, we may say hybrid, but we may have some 10:00 PM phone calls or one call now saying that the school's going to be closed tomorrow because we don't have enough staff. But I guess I would like to maybe ask the administration in a minute their opinion on that because I could be swayed either way. And if they were to say, you know, the burden of not knowing is so significant that we would rather just stay remote, I would take that into consideration. But I also, you know, I'm ready to be in hybrid in a couple of weeks like we had planned. I just wanted to say a quick thing because Amy brought it up as far as outside the box options. And this is more so just for my fellow board members to start looking into because it's something that I've been reading about a little bit. And I don't want to give the impression that I'm ready to do this now or soon. This is just kind of my current thoughts on if we do start to phase back in in a more full way, what that might look like. And the research that I've done has pointed me towards looking at the lower grades first. For a lot of different reasons, they seem to be less affected. They seem to, from what I've heard in the community, they seem to actually do a better job keeping their masks on when they're supposed to and when they're told to. I guess it's easier to tell a six-year-old to do something than it is to tell a 15-year-old to do something. And I also think having the youngest kids in school alleviates some of the community concerns as far as childcare and things like that, where, you know, if a junior in high school has to stay home for the day, that doesn't impact as many things as far as childcare and whatnot. But if a six-year-old has to stay home, that's different. So I guess as far as Amy's topic and thinking outside the box, my current thinking is when, if and when we get to that point, what I'm picturing at the moment anyway is phasing back in the elementary school kids first. And I don't want to, I don't want to say that's a trial run. They're certainly not guinea pigs. But again, I think it has the most benefit. And if we're, if we're going to take a risk at any point and start putting kids back in the building in a, in a capacity where we may not be able to maintain social distancing, I just think the benefits of doing that with the youngest, with the, with the elementary school children, the benefits outweigh that of doing it with any other groups right away. So just, just a thought, like I said, but as far as this motion is concerned, I would support it. I would actually support going hybrid for longer as a plan with the opportunity to reconsider. Just again, to give people a lot of planning time and expectation. But if, you know, we're going to review it every couple of weeks anyway, so two weeks isn't the end of the world. Any other discussion before we go ahead and call the question? Patty or principals want to weigh in on it before we vote?
If you'd like to hear from the principals about how remote's been going, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay, we'll start with John, because Wendy said so.
Yeah, I don't know if she said so or not, Andy. I don't know. We've been doing remote obviously for a while and it's pretty interesting. If kids are engaged, I think they do a pretty good job with remote. And I think I said it last time, some of the issues are that we have kids that are not engaged. You know, they don't, they don't log on, they don't keep their cameras on, or we just don't see them at all. So that part is frustrating. And having said that, kids are seeing their teachers four days a week for half-hour classes. And so their actual academic time and contact time is increased over what we do in the hybrid model. So, you know, speaking educationally and curriculum-wise, they're getting more instructional time now in the remote setting than they have been in the hybrid. Now, having said that, the hybrid piece obviously offers the in-person, which you can't replace that. So the other piece of it is I do believe staff, because they see their whole class and not a cohort group, they feel as though they're, they are making ground in curriculum and making some good movement. And it's more consistent for kids. So that part of the remote works well. Obviously, socialization and all those very important pieces are not happening the same as if they were in-person in either full or hybrid. But right now, I would say that we're getting pretty good results with the remote as well as we could.
Thanks. Dan?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's interesting because your analogy... Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it's interesting because your analogy earlier, Andy, is kind of accurate. And part of the issue we have is when students aren't engaged, it's very difficult for us to get in touch with them. And one of the competing factors that we also have to navigate is we have students that have made short-term decisions to work more rather than do their schooling. And they've, and they've been told not to do that, but they're doing it and making money, which short-term is great for them, I guess. But long-term has some significant impact, obviously, to their education. So with that in mind, I do think it's helpful to have students in the building. I, I'll echo what John has said about it does increase instructional time because we have mixed the cohorts when we have been remote, and that has been good. I could just tell you from my experience back in November, it's exponential growth or exponential threat, spread that is really difficult to manage. And so it really gets to a point as, as I think we all saw in late November where, you know, it really doesn't matter what we think, the math kind of takes over and we can't, you know, manage a building. And so obviously, you know, I don't want to be the principal of a building with 20 kids in it. I'd much rather, you know, have students in the building. And so I am concerned about the exponential growth moving forward as we saw in November. I don't want to repeat that, but also it's much easier for us to get services to the students when they're in our building.
Thank you. Wendy?
All right, I'm going to hear about it from John later. It's, I'm kind of going to combine what both of them said. For us, we want the kids in the building. I don't think that's, everybody wants the kids in the building, right? I, I've said, you know, I'm new here. I don't know Hill as Hill with all the kids in the building, and I can't wait to see what it's like when it's buzzing around and things like that. And I know we're making our decisions based on safety, rightfully so. In, if we're to go back hybrid, like Dan was saying, in, in November and right before, when we were in and out, I, I expect that to happen. Just as we were sitting here, there's more notifications coming in. I'm hearing about staff that now has to be on quarantine since the beginning of the meeting. And it is like Dan's saying, it spreads very quick and very far. And that's what'll shut us down. So I do expect that we're, when we go back to hybrid, that that will be something that we're contending with every day. I joke, or I think about every day at 5:30, I pick up my cell phone and the first thing I do is how many people are calling out? Because that's where we're at with it. Not, that's our job. We're going to manage that. But it's a reality of you might get that call at 6:00 or 6:30 that says that schools close because we've had a lot of notifications. So if we're back in hybrid, I just, I, I want that known, that that's going to be the reality of the situation. The other reality I just like to also make known is we would definitely be going back to the two days of instruction. We don't have the staffing to do the remote learning the way we do now on the other days, the asynchronous days. So that's where John was saying that we were touching the kids academically more often. Like we're seeing them, you know, face-to-face with it, and that's been a positive thing with this. And there's pros and cons to all of them. But going back, you know, to hybrid, just one of those things kind of stated with that remote. We do also have kids that fall off the radar and we work really hard each week as we have a whole team that works to contact families and to put in supports any way that we can to bring them back to the table. You know, we have kids coming in for services, bringing in kids that aren't successful remote that have IEPs and things like that. So we're doing everything we can right now in the remote setting. But again, it's just about weighing the priorities and the pros and cons of each of the models moving forward.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for anybody before we call the question?
Andy, this is Ann. I just had a quick question. And I know it's a large staffing amount, so please ignore my, my ignorance. It's just a question. So if there's not enough staff, you know, we do have to close the building. Would it be, is it because we don't have enough staff in each grade? Or say we don't have enough staff to staff the second grade, we would just close the second grade? Does that make any sense?
Patty, do you want to tackle that?
Sure. We have actually thought about that. And there have been times when we've realized that only one grade level needs to be remote. And that's perfectly doable. If we can do that, we will. I think it's when we've had to close school, it's because maybe we had, you know, 15 teachers out scattered all throughout the building and not enough people, even paras and secretaries and support, there's everybody in the building. We wouldn't be able to cover that many people. So that's when we've decided that we need to cancel school. But we do consider each school individually and we do consider each grade level and content area. You know, if it's, if it's a specialist that's out, we can make do. But it, it just depends on who the teachers are that are, that are absent any given day.
Thank you very much, Patty. That clears it up. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to, I'm going to get the number right again, to return to hybrid model, beginning on January the 19th for a period to last at least until January 29th. On a roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Before we move on to the next bullet point, I had a thought while, while the principals were speaking. And I guess I'll ask the board members if you're interested, but I certainly, Patty, how long would it take us to replicate the surveys that went out in the fall? Being that people or families are fresh off of some fully remote time, I'm hearing from the principals that there are some advantages to that as far as contact time with the students and whatnot. I would be interested again to see how many of the community are, are feeling still like they're ready to go full in? How, and how many would prefer hybrid versus remote? You know, there's a lot of questions as far as the consistency and things like that, and it's been a while since we've heard from the community. Do you think we could get that out maybe by the end of the week so that we could give them a week to fill it out and be able to review the results at our next meeting? Is that doable or is that too fast?
Yeah, I think it's doable. I think the difficulty comes when, when there's analysis. So if you were asking open-ended questions, we had to gather all that in a spreadsheet and, and review that and try to synthesize the data. That's when it gets cumbersome. If we're just simply kind of getting a feel for where everybody's at, that's pretty simple to do.
Yeah, I, I think it could be quick and easy. You know, what do you prefer going forward? Maybe, you know, what, maybe a one through five, like how did remote learning go for you, that type of thing? Whatever administration thinks is appropriate. And then I guess if, if you want to do like a, the final question, just be an open text box for comments. You know, we could, we could, you could drop those in the drive and we could review them as we have time. But I think it'd be great. It's been, it's been a little while. World has changed like it does every week now. And I think if we can hear from everybody as to where they stand, that'd be great.
Andy, can I make a comment? Can you back up on that?
Absolutely.
You know, what the rest of the board thought about that. I agree. I had thought the same thing over the holiday break. I just had a couple of requests. And maybe I'm stating the obvious, so forgive me, but I know that in the past, we had a problem about somehow like not locking down the survey so that like if I wanted to, I could have filled it out 10 times. I could have had, you know, my mom who lives in Concord fill it out. So I think we need to find some mechanism of, you know, account, I don't know. I don't know how that's managed, but that needs to be managed. And then the other thing is, I think that the questions just need to be, you know, need to have like a lot of set of eyes on them and, and really have care taken with them. You know, I'm sure I'm going to get it wrong, but I remember the question was like, you know, what form of education do you think is best for your child? And, you know, the answer, I think for most of us, is like full-time, in-person, in-school. You know, it didn't say like, given current conditions, what do you think is best? And, and so I think it's just really important to get the wording as best as we can.
Thanks. Other comments? Okay. Oh, sorry, I was muted. The next bullet point under school instructional model is full return to school planning. So we have a rather larger document. But I will turn it over to Patty and the administration if they want to summarize for the folks on the, on the meeting tonight.
Sure. So at the last meeting, like you said, Andy, it's, it's a really large document. So we did, each administrator just did go through and quickly summarize the document, explain what it looks like. There's three columns. Each school did the same format, so for easy readability. Basically, the reentry teams broke it up into sections regarding social distancing. So what it would look like for a full return, if there was still six feet of social distancing required, what it would look like if there were three feet of social distancing, and then what it would look like if there was no social distancing. So not knowing at what point we're ready to return, trying to plan for all contingencies. And, and this is something that we've been talking about for months. You know, trying to, it's watching the current conditions, watching the cases, trying to figure out, you know, I was hoping, really hoping that we were going to be able to spend some time full in in the spring. I was a little bit discouraged today when I heard the timeline for vaccine for school staff. That's much further along than I was hoping it was going to be. But we'll have to play that by ear and see how the distribution goes because I do think that's going to make a big difference. But for now, we do have the three scenarios because we don't know at what point we'll be re-entering school. We did put it out there right away as requested to the public so that they could review it. And Andy, I think you asked that they submit any comments that they had to the board about the document. And welcomed feedback, welcomed any things that we may not have thought of. Sometimes when you look at something over and over and over again, it's hard to, to come in with some new ideas. I'm sure over the holiday break, people did not spend a lot of time poring over our reentry plan and probably needed to take a break. So I would entertain any feedback the board has at this point, and we're happy to put it on a future agenda if that's what the board would like us to do.
Any questions on this document right now? I know I, I looked over it briefly this weekend, but I have not taken a deep dive yet myself.
Andy, this is Ann. Have we had any public feedback on this yet?
I haven't received any. Have you, Patty?
No. Nope.
I've only had one email, but it didn't have to do with this. So I didn't know. The parents are, you know, had time to see it. I would like to see it on our next agenda.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I was going to say that too. I think we should definitely take another look at it. And hopefully, you know, we've got 130-something people on the call right now. Hopefully, some of them have a chance to take a peek at it too and get us some feedback from the community. That would be great.
When I do an update about tonight's meeting to the community, I will mention the plan and ask them to check it out and provide some feedback, and that may help generate some responses, especially now that we're back from break.
Excellent. So I guess if there's no other questions, we can move on unless, you know, if there's anybody, any of the administrators that wanted to point something out or wanted to give a comment now that we've got this document, you're certainly free to do that. But I, you know, don't feel obligated either. Okay, so 6B is the current fiscal year budget update. So I'm imagining we're going to go to Amber on that?
I have, or I can give it to you and then if you have follow-up questions for Amber. So we wanted to continue to update you on this number, knowing that we are going to be having conversation about purchasing from that cut list. We talked about that at the last meeting. Right now, you're still at $1,015,000 or 15, 180, and feeling pretty comfortable that that's enough of a buffer right now. That if you wanted to make the decision to allow the spending to occur now, we could start with some prioritized items. I guess we're looking for direction from the board because I didn't want to just proceed, knowing that we cut that from the budget and, and order it now unless you were feeling comfortable that we had enough of a surplus that we could begin to do that.
That's positive news.
Andy, this is Ann. So this total $118,000 that would come off the 2122 budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The only reservations I have is, it doesn't say the line number, but it's 1100739306. There's been a lot of talk about the 3D printers. So I just know that's something that the residents are asking to hold off on that.
I have not had any feedback on those printers. I know you asked a question about them, Ann, but nobody has submitted any feedback that I'm aware of.
So would those still be on the list to be purchased?
I would have to ask Dan. Dan, do you remember if those were on the list?
I believe they were because they were, we held off on purchasing them this year.
Right, I think they were previously in this year's budget, right?
Yes, they were.
Yes.
I'm just pulling up the list here. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess from my perspective, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this. If the surplus was smaller, I would have some concerns. But I think lowering next year's budget number is a good thing. And the things on this list to me are, are important things. I know that there's been talk about these science books for a long time. And they keep getting kicked down the road. And, and, you know, I, my perspective on a lot of this stuff, I think, is, is partly formed from what happened at, at Village School and certainly not blaming anybody, but, you know, if we delay things long enough, those problems just become bigger problems. And, you know, there's fencing on here and upgrades to our auditorium and books, which is a pretty basic thing. So, you know, in, in the spirit of giving the school what it needs and also, you know, using surplus that we have, it's, it's not like we're going above and beyond to spend this money. I certainly want to return a healthy chunk to offset taxes this year if we possibly can with, you know, the year that everybody has had and the fiscal position of the school, the town, the citizens, everybody. But I'm also concerned with, you know, returning a million dollars because we've seen before that that has a problematic effect, I suppose, on, on the tax rate and people's mortgage payments. And because there's a delay from when mortgage companies recalculate all their stuff, you know, you, you get this refund check because you've paid too much. And then, then all of a sudden, your rates get jacked more when it goes back up to a normal level next year. And I think generally, just having a surplus of a million dollars to return to offset taxes sounds on, on its face like a good thing, but it causes some problems for, for families to budget properly for their, for their mortgage bills. So I think lowering this number and using up some of that on, on good, you know, good purchases, things that, that in my opinion, the school needs makes sense from my point of view.
And, you know, I would remind you that this, this list was over two years. So, you know, these were things that were in the budget this year. We froze the budget. If we didn't purchase them this year, we were going to purchase them next year, but we didn't increase the budget by an equal amount. So this is basically over a two-year period that we tried to keep this, the lines flat. And, you know, also knowing now that we've had students in the building a lot and there are things that would be benefiting our students now who are in the building that they could benefit from. So, and like you said, kicking repairs and such down the road, we're, we're going to find ourselves in trouble again. So I think, you know, we were talking about waiting a little bit to start chipping away at this list. But I, I think there's a, enough of a comfort level with this budget that we could start purchasing some things if the board's okay with that.
Right. I would also, I guess I asked the question, I know we, you know, our budget binders are done. The budget committee has them. We're going to present on Thursday night. So I'm not sure how much wiggle room that we have. But again, having a surplus at the end of the year of $800,000 presents some problems. And, and again, it sounds really good on the face and it's not, it's certainly not bad. But it makes tax rates challenging, more challenging to understand in my opinion. So I'm also thinking about the Warren article that we have for some of the capital improvements. That's a, a pretty large number. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but hundreds of, a couple hundred thousand dollars anyway. I'd be interested to hear if we can still do it, knowing where we are in the process, if there's an appetite from the board and if... if there's an appetite from the board, and if Mr. Coughlin would think it was a good idea. Rather than, you know, giving back $800,000 this year, just to ask for $300,000 next year seems a little funny to me. And I know some of those are trust fund funded things. But if some of those purchases could be made from from this hefty surplus, it, again, it's just taking money that we have to ask the taxpayers for next year. It seems to me that it's six one half dozen of the other. We've we've got $800,000 we're sitting on, and we're gonna give it back just to turn around and ask for half of it back anyway. It seems silly to me. So not looking for an answer on that tonight, but something to consider if some of those things in the capital improvement or in the Warren article rather are of a high priority, and there would be some advantage to getting those funded sooner. I would be open to discussion on that if Patty and Josh think that that's a reasonable avenue.
Andy, this is Anne. Is there any way that we can find out where this surplus is coming from? Because I know when I work with David on the selectmen side, we have him tell us exactly where these, you know, these surpluses are coming from.
Patty or Amber, do we have an idea of what's driving that at the moment? Is it mostly on the revenue side? Or do we have things we haven't expended or?
It comes from all over the place. Amber, do you have a summary in front of you by account codes like the 1100s and 1200s?
I do.
Do you mind just going over that if it can be quick?
I do want to take, I do want to make a note that this surplus that I'm giving you is strictly a budget appropriation. It is not revenue appropriation. It's way too early for me to be able to give you the revenue side right now. So the number I'm giving you is strictly budget appropriation. Okay? Over the next couple of months, we will get in additional revenues between tuition and state revenues, and I'll be able to give you a an idea of where that's at. But in the beginning of January, it's just much too early for that piece of it. So I just wanted to make sure to to mention that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. So in the 1100 accounts, we have a little over 200,000. So that's your supplies, any salary positions. In the special programs, which is the 200, 1200 accounts, which is obviously special education, we have about 250,000 in excess budget appropriation there. We have a little bit in guidance in nursing. One of the other big areas obviously is transportation. We're getting some credits from transportation. That plays a role. Between regular transportation and special transportation, it's about 100,000 between the two. And then other support services, which is 2900, which are your fringe benefits. So any, if there were any, there were personnel changes, that plays a big role in that section. Anytime you hire someone or don't fill a position or whatever it may be, there are planned selection differences that take a that that play into that. So you're gonna have dental and health may be different. You may have somebody that was on a family plan and now is on a single plan. You're gonna have FICA changes, retirement changes, and those all play a role. So there was a pretty decent amount sitting in that. We had a little, about a little over 500,000 sitting there. So when I said, when I say to you, I feel comfortable that the, I believe I said last time, I feel like the areas in which these numbers are surplus, there shouldn't be drastic changes specifically in the, you know, the 2900s. There should not be significant changes there. Unless we had a slow people that are, you know, pregnant or something like that, they could change their family plans, and they could jump up pretty drastically, but it should not be drastic enough for us to be concerned. Those are really the areas of of excess surplus at this point.
Thank you, Amber. Andy, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
Amber, the premium holiday for school care is 120,000. Is that in this number, or would that be going into the budget for 2122?
No, we every, I have to look if they, if it's carried from one year to the next. I believe it's going to be in this one, but I need to double check with human resources. I always see it every year, but I'm not sure if we're realizing it a year later. Do you know what I mean? Whether it's postponed. So I need to double check on that for you. When that comes in, I believe that's coming in as miscellaneous revenue. It's not coming, it's not it's not reducing that line.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for those numbers. I really appreciate it.
Oh, you're very welcome.
All right, I guess I'm going to, oh, I want to make a note that that Amy had to drop. So we're back down to Jean and Anne and myself. And I think I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to authorize the district to purchase the items on the cut list that was provided to us over the course of, you know, the remaining fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, discussion around that list. Okay, hearing none. Then on a roll call vote to authorize the expenditure, I guess I'll give the number, the official. To expend, the items listed for 118,155 dollars in the current fiscal year on a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
No, only because of the printers. Thank you.
And I'm yes. So that passes. So Josh, you can start to do some stuff. So anything else on current fiscal year, any other questions on fiscal, on current fiscal year before we move on to next year's budget? Okay, so Gen item number 6D or 6C, sorry, is next year's budget. It says if needed, which, you know, there's not a lot changed from last time to this time. We put the, we, I shouldn't include myself and say we because I did nothing. But the school worked very hard on getting the budget binders together for the municipal budget committee members. I know that David had informed them that they were ready for pickup. So we'll be reviewing those, as I said, on Thursday with the Budget Committee. Amber's gonna join me to give them an overview of the different accounts and what we're looking at for next year. So I guess I'll check with Patty, Amber, see if you have anything that you want to know about next year's budget, and then we can open up to the board for questions.
So we didn't make any changes, obviously, because you did vote on a number to put forward to the MBC. I think the only thing to note is that you did ask for Josh and Amber to take a look at any areas that we may be able to purchase items from trust funds. We did put that together for the board for consideration. So you can take a look over that over the next couple of weeks. And I think as we get rolling with the MBC and start talking about the bottom line, if there's any further work to be done, you can take that into consideration. Obviously, it gives Josh some heartburn when we start deviating from his CIP that he so carefully puts together with the town. So, you know, we did our best to come up with some items, but it does come with some caution about what that means when you're pulling from things ahead of time or or taking things out of a trust that that were not part of the CIP. So just caution goes along with that list.
Is that Patty, would you be okay with me sharing that with the MBC? I would, only because Jerry Flurry has so much to do with the trust funds, I would value his opinion on, you know, you're talking about some pitfalls with taking be a valuable resource to give an opinion on that.
Sure, I would just let him know whenever you give the MBC something, just let them know that the board hasn't had an opportunity to discuss it yet, but that's fine.
Okay. All right, questions regarding next year's budget at this point, whether it be process or numbers or whatever?
Andy, this is Anne. So Patty, the list that you're saying is the, what Josh said to us about the asbestos and things, that list there? Taking out of school building capital reserve?
Yes.
Because I just have a quick question. On the second item down is the water fountain and sink installs at Hill in PA. But we already have that on line 1421. So would it be in the budget or are we taking it out of the reserve?
I think the, what the board was looking at was any area in the budget that we might be able to cut money from and take it out of a trust fund instead.
Thank you very much, Patty. Andy, I'm all set with the budget.
All right. Okay, excuse me. Then we will move on to 6D, which is Amber again, to talk about transportation.
I believe you have in the drive, I put together a response to the questions that were asked. I was trying to explain it in a way that hopefully, everybody can understand. I know sometimes I speak in a different language. And so I tried to break down how the transportation contract is outlined, how the invoices are outlined, and that what type of savings. I know there was some questions at the last meeting in regards to, well, how much would it be? Well, it's very difficult to give exactly without knowing exactly how many days we might be in remote or whatever. So in this email, I used 35 days that we would have been remote since November to give an idea of what that savings would be in that captured time period. So in the email, I outlined that in the contract, typically we would have eight buses, because that's what our contract states, which totals 45,560. Because we are short four bus drivers, they have been charging us for those four buses rather than the full eight. So that equates out to half that amount, which is 22,780. Because we've had to do some double runs, they have then added a fee for those particular double runs, which was 3,624. So when you look at the email, I tried to do the math out for you too. So I know I'm a visual person, so I like to see it out. So then if you were to take the 22,780 and then, which would be the savings, right, originally? And then you'd have to subtract out that extra fee, which was 3674. The total monthly savings would be 19,156. That's for monthly savings, not thinking about remote at all. That's just saying on top of right now, you know, if we weren't in remote status, we were going hybrid, that's what the monthly savings is. Okay? I then below that broke down what their invoice looks like. So their invoice looks like what I just said. Eight buses times the $316.39 per day times 180 days equates to 455,601. They bill on a 10 month basis, which is where I got the 45560 that I spoke about a few minutes ago. Again, they're crediting us. So we're only doing four buses. So really, they're only billing us for 227,800 for the instead of that 400. So I outlined it that way. The other thing I put on here is in regards to if you're in remote status. So if the district is in remote, which we were, like I said, approximately 35 days, they credit us the 200, the four buses, which was 22780. And then we'd also on top of that, as I mentioned pre at the last meeting, we would receive a fuel credit. So the fuel credit, they're giving us 54.73 gallons a day at $2.32 a gallon, which which equates out to $126.97 a day. So if I multiply that by 35 days, you get 4,444. So I then took that to add the 22780, right, because we're not thinking about double runs at this point. So we'd get the full credit for the full buses, four buses. Add up, add in the 4,430, excuse me, 443. And the total savings for 35 remote days would be 27,224. I know that was a lot of numbers. So that's why I outlined it in the email so that you could kind of see it broken down. And I broke it down in subsections so you could see each of those three areas I just spoke about.
Thank you very much. Questions about busing, busing contracts, current numbers?
Andy, this is Anne. There's no questions, but, you know, kudos, Amber. I know you do speak a different language, but you you made it awesome for us to understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think it took me about 45 minutes to write this email. I kept going back and forth. I need to make sure everyone understands this.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. That's, I had a pretty good picture before, but that kind of brought it right into focus. So appreciate that. So 6E, March meeting location. Patty, is that just the discussion we have with Dean? Or do you have an additional? No, okay. So we'll move on to 6F then. New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly Resolutions.
Okay, so you have probably seen information coming. There's an awful coming from the School Board Association this year. So it's, you may very well have missed some of these emails. So Kathy printed them all and put them in the drive for you just as a reminder, because one of the requests from the School Board Association is that the board vote on each of the resolutions so that when you send your delegate to the Delegate Assembly, the delegate is voting on behalf of the board. And April is your delegate. So when she goes on this, I think it's a Saturday, it's virtual this year, she'll be casting a vote. So April's not here, Amy's not here. But I believe that the meeting, well, you might have one more meeting. You have one more meeting before the January 23th Delegate Assembly. So you could put this off until the 19th if you wanted the entire board to be able to vote on the resolutions. It's up to you.
My two cents, this is the one thing that I have not gotten a chance to put eyes on. So I'm not prepared to do much with it tonight. And I think with two members missing, if we have the opportunity to push this, that's what I would prefer, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, this is Anne. I was gonna ask the same thing. Thank you.
Jean, you good with that?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
All right, I will try to remember to send out an email later this week, just an informational email to the board members to remind them to take a look at that so that we can, you know, next week's the last chance, so.
I can ask Kathy to do that for you if you would like that off.
That would be great. I gotta send her flowers or something. Kathy treats me good. Okay, then 6G we added for a facilities update. So if Josh is still awake.
I am. Hi, y'all. Unfortunately, over break, we discovered we had a moisture problem in our gym hallway at Pembroke Academy under the VCT tile in between that and the cement floor. We noticed this a couple of weeks back, maybe a month or so ago, we saw some glue seeping up through the VCT tile, which isn't uncommon in our world. So what we do is that the crew cleans it up. We move about our business. Unfortunately, this glue kept coming back time and time again. Then we saw it starting to spread, which started to cause a little bit of alarm in my world. So I contacted our flooring company. In consultation with them, they came in to take a look at the floor with myself, and we decided to just pop a tile and see what was happening underneath the floor. When we did that, we discovered a significant amount of moisture trapped in between the VCT tile and the cement, and pretty much no glue on the tile or on the cement, which means it's been there for quite some time at that point in time. So what we did is typical, when we see moisture somewhere, we just start removing it. Specifically, in this case, it was something that that our crew could handle. So we we removed um, the VCT tile until we found no more wet cement, for lack of better words. That amounted to about seventy percent of the gym floor, the gym hallway floor, not the gym floor. Um, we did double and triple check the gym. We believe we don't have moisture in there. We dried the area and we have been in consultation with our insurance company who has been in to look at the area. Um, the next question was, is where did the water come from? How is it there? Cause as we were pulling, we, we could tell that the floor was drying, the cement was drying. Um, we left all our fans and dehumidifiers in there for quite some time and, and it all dried up accordingly. So in that area, we have drains underneath the floors, which it's not uncommon, unfortunately for a drain pipe or sewer pipe to break underneath the concrete um, and cause a problem long-term down the road of moisture coming up through. So what we did is we had those drains scoped with a camera and those came back negative, that they were all good and everything was working accordingly. Um, so unfortunately it led us back to, we had a toilet break in that area quite some time ago, which we did take on significant water. Um, we had the toilet fixed, obviously. Um, we extracted the water that came out into the hallway and we spent significant time pushing the water in the hallway to keep it out of the gymnasium at the time. We dried the area. We felt that, um, there wasn't an issue. We felt that we had dried it and we, we moved on with our life. Unfortunately, this glue started round two of the problem, which then led us again now to popping up the tile and the floor, um, bringing us back to the toilet incident. So short story, we have a floor issue, um, in the gym hallway of Pembroke Academy. We've dried it. We have reordered the replacement flooring with our contractor and they are due on site this week to start replacing the flooring. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Josh. Um, off the top of my head, do you have a sense from the insurance company if, if this is something that's going to be covered or have they not really said yet?
So they haven't said, um, I discovered, we discovered this part of it the first week of break. Um, we had it all removed. We had it all dried pretty much by the time they got in as in that situation. We're not going to wait around. Um, so they didn't come in till New Year's Eve last Thursday. Um, we spent about an hour in the area. I told them, you know, the story, for lack of better words, what we've done to prevent it from happening in, in the future. What we did to save the gym floor, for lack of better words, and, um, where we were with the process and we have not heard back from them. I don't anticipate an issue, but obviously until we get the results from them, um, I, I would plead the fifth on that for now.
Sure. And just one more, if I could, um, do you have a ballpark idea of, you know, if they didn't cover it, is, is this a ten thousand dollar problem or a, a two hundred thousand dollar problem?
Yeah. So if, if they didn't cover it, the flooring, A, we saved on the removal because our crew did it. We saved on all the equipment that we have on site. Um, that in those moments, so the, the mold, the water removal companies, they're charging huge money for those fans and dehumidifiers. So we say, save significantly on that. With that, the flooring is going to cost us about ten thousand, five hundred bucks, um, to replace what needs to be replaced. We didn't, we stopped where, where it dried and that's standard in that procedure. Um, the tile was the same type of tile could be reordered. So it's not like we were going to have mismatched tile. Um, so it's going to be about ten thousand, five hundred, um, another couple hundred bucks for the wax that I, I ordered due to it and roughly a thousand dollars to, to be in our drains and scope those drains, which whether there's an issue or not, you, we could never just put a floor back on or reinstall a floor without getting under there and, and looking at those in that situation. So call it thirteen thousand dollars.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate you coming tonight. Keep us in the loop. Um, other, other questions for Josh?
Um, yeah, this is Ian. Um, insurance companies loves photos. So did you save them a photo of before you started all the work to clean it up?
So we, we didn't have photos unfortunately of the incident, incident happening. Um, because of the situation, it was kind of chaotic and, and our number one job was to keep that, that water off that gymnasium floor. With that being said, when we started removing the floor, I take photos step by step. Um, so he hasn't asked for all those photos. They did look at them when they were on site with me and we did send a couple. Um, when Christine up in the SAU files the original claim. So they do have, they do have some photos.
Perfect. Thank you, Josh. I know it's not your first rodeo with insurance.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thanks again, Josh. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us to board reports, agenda item number seven. Um, and we will hear from our student senate rep, uh, Mr. Casey, if you're with us.
I am, yeah. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. So, uh, I know I talked for a while last week. I'll be a little more brief this week, but, um, we are working, as I talked about last week, the talent show. So we are finalizing the acts and alongside that, we have decided to push the deadline one week for submissions, just to make sure that we maximize participation and put together the best show that we can for the entirety of the school. So another deadline that we're working on is we are hoping to begin to propose, uh, an alternative option for hallway decorating, which we normally do in February alongside winter carnival. And I know I speak for the entirety of the senate and I believe the entire school, uh, the student body, when I say, um, we'd like to have some something to do with winter carnival happening in the same, uh, timeframe that we normally do in February. So that's our goal. We're hoping to work with administration to put together some guidelines to make a safe and able for the, uh, different classes to work together to pull off these, uh, often elaborate hallway decorations in the normal timeframe for winter carnival. So last week I spoke to you about the code word challenge that we worked with Mr. Morris and his videos with. Overall, that was successful and lots of advisors participated and we're hopeful that that, uh, led to some more kids watching the always informative videos that Mr. Morris has been putting out on a weekly basis. So other than that, we've just been finalizing some designs for our yearly T-shirts that we always make. We've been lining up some sponsors. And, uh, we're hoping in the next month to have those begin to be printed and ready to go. But, uh, other than that, that's all I have. I'm always happy to take your questions, but that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Um, questions for Ryan? All right. Well, keep up the good work and, you know, hopefully you guys can, can salvage some of the winter carnival stuff and hopefully move it into the spring. Um, you know, you can have creative ideas on, on how to do some things, um, for the end of the year. I'm, I'm hoping against hope that something will happen that seems like normal. Um, but we appreciate you putting in the effort.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, um, then next up is Ann, SAU board or exec board?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. The AREA committee, Amy's not here and to do, I don't know if anything's happened with that. I know there's been some communications.
Yeah, just me, communications. We haven't had another meeting.
Okay. Um, yep, go ahead.
Can I just mention, um, I can't remember who it was, maybe April asked for the email from Dean about the AREA to be put in the drive. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw that that was put in there for everyone.
Yep, I did. Thank you. Um, so next would be budget committee, which is me and Jean. Um, we've kind of belabored that tonight. We've got a meeting on Thursday that will be um, the, the, I guess, big presentation, if you want to call it, but the first time that we really lay out the budget for the NBC. Um, I think we're in a fairly advantageous position in that we got them, you know, I've, I've been routinely giving them copies as we get them. Um, and they've expressed gratitude with that. I think they'll be, um, informed and, and come to the table with a reasonable discussion. Um, hoping that, you know, with a budget number or a budget increase number, um, of only a couple percent, that hopefully we can um, see eye to eye and, and work something out that's the best for the taxpayers and the school. Um, so that discussion will start, um, Thursday and, you know, typically we are, we are the agenda for the next few weeks after that. Um, so it'll be a back and forth. I'll, I'll bring questions to Patty and Amber and back to the board when appropriate and, um, and we'll hammer that thing out. So um, and again, just stress, I'll, I'll work with David and Ann and, and see what we can do as far as communication and coordination um, to get a decision as soon as possible around, um, how the meetings are going to look as well. Um, Jean, anything that you want to add on budget?
Nope, I'm all set. You covered it.
How about pace?
Pace doesn't meet again until February.
Okay. Um, I don't know if Kevin is, I don't see Kevin Foss on here tonight, but last I, last communication that I received from him, and I think he spoke last time or two times ago, um, that they are just about ready to kind of bring forward a formal proposal, um, after, um, after the work that they've done. So hopefully we see that fairly soon. We can add that to the pile of work that, that we have to do. Um, but for now we'll move on. So next is principals. So if one of you guys want to let us know how your holidays were, um, we'll start, we'll go top down this time. So Mr. Morris, if you want to kick us off?
Sure. Um, athletics have begun, uh, practicing and seasons will begin next week. Uh, as you remember from the fall, we had regional schedules, uh, and that will continue to be the case for our winter sports. Our school counseling department continues to provide support for students during their get organized program on flex days. And they're seeing more participation with that with students, uh, and hopefully that will continue to grow as we move forward. Uh, and I just also want to give a shout out to Amber Rue, who is our community outreach counselor. Uh, she facilitated a gift giving program for some of our less fortunate families in the Pembroke Academy community. And I know that, um, the recipients, uh, of that program were, uh, really moved by the work that she did and the support that, uh, those families received from the community.
Awesome. Um, I guess we'll do one at a time this time. So are there any questions for Dan before we move on? Okay, um, then we'll go to Mr. Marston.
Uh, another like PA, our athletic program, or in this case basketball has started. We've, uh, picked the teams and we're, uh, starting some practices. So it's it's nice to see, uh, kids in the gym. It's been, it seems like it's been a while. Um, the other thing that we've been doing that, um, I have to praise the staff a lot for is I've uh, working with Chris Moltika, who's the curriculum coordinator for the SAU, has been working on assessments with staff to review their assessments, to, uh, develop, uh, as strong as possible, any assessments we're giving kids. So we're having not only philosophical discussions, but we're also, uh, putting pen to, uh, to paper to uh, really look at our assessments and how we're assessing and are we getting what we really want to out of those assessments. So on top of everything else, uh, we've asked the staff to, uh, really look at assessments and it's been a, um, it's quite a project and we're, we've met a couple of times and we'll meet once a month until the end of the year on, on that. Um, I can't thank the staff enough for the amount of time and patience they have, uh, putting into that on top of all the other things we're doing. Um, we talked about it, uh, earlier, but I did want to emphasize that the, uh, uh, one thing I wanted to say during my pencil report about the, uh, health screening, we, we have a significant issue with people not filling out that health screening and uh, so we're going to try to come up with some ideas and how to, uh, increase that, um, the participation in that. Uh, I know, uh, Allison talked about, about three hundred at the high school. We had about fifty at Three Rivers uh, today, students, and we have three hundred and twenty students. We got a long way uh, really for sure, um, where we, where we sit with those health screenings. So I've got a couple of ideas. I'm working with April uh, Barker to figure out a better way to get more participation on that because it is critical as we move forward, particularly as we uh, going to start having kids in the building. And that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Questions for John?
Um, this is, uh, Ian. I just had a, um, a quick question is, um, you know how the pals, they give out, you know, prizes for the most box tops, which I know it's this, the program's changed quite a bit. Um, is that something that, um, that maybe, you know, the hills, I mean, not the hill, the Three Rivers students would entertain if we could come up with like raffle prizes from the community?
I mean, as far as if, if you fill out the form, you get your hat, your, uh, name drawn or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we can look at that. We, uh, we're, we're open for anything. Uh, one thing that we're thinking about doing is before kids come in in the building, they'll fill out their assessment, um, if they haven't already done so. Um, but, um, yeah, hey, we'll, we'll think of, we'll try anything.
Yeah, I just thinking prizes might, uh, I was thinking of a parade earlier, you know, the, with the fire trucks, you know, the class who, who've got the most, who did the most would go on a parade, but that might work more for the hill probably, right?
Yeah, well, part, part of our issue is, uh, you know, working with that app a little bit to make sure that we can, uh, right now, we do not send it to students. And that's one thing that we're talking about is to send that also to students so they would be able to fill it out themselves. Um, and, and hopefully that would increase. So we're working on those pieces. A few things we got to work on, but um, yeah, we'll, hey, we'll try anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Gary?
Um, I only, I have a couple of things for you. Um, we've started doing, um, a, a virtual assemblies each month. Um, we are, we put our first one together for December. It got pushed out to all the students via seesaw. Um, and it, it was, it was a lot of fun to put it together. The staff got to um, throw their hat in the ring and there was a video that you can check out on Facebook, um, pretty successful in our world, two thousand views. You know, that's, that's exciting for us, um, to get everyone into the holiday spirit. But in these assemblies, we're really trying to focus on growth mindset. It's a really tough year for everybody. So we, um, had the kids listen to, um, a, a read aloud that was focusing on, um, flexibility and silver linings. And then we invited them to give us their, um, successes they've seen this year and things like that. So those made it into our virtual assembly and then, um, of course, the teachers, uh, the whole staff in there dancing. That's on Facebook. So you can check that one out. Um, so it was a lot of fun. We're going to definitely keep that going. It brought a lot of smiles, uh, to everyone's faces and to see the kids was great. I, again, I don't know everybody in person, so it's just another way, me personally, selfishly, I love watching it and seeing the kids share, um, one of the ways I can kind of get to know them. And then, um, now that, you know, we're, one of the things that we're going to be implementing now that we go back to hybrid, um, for us, it's important to know that our dismissal, you know, with the little ones, you ha, they're always need to be supervised. So for our car pickup, what you don't see is typically anybody that is in parent pickup, all those students are seated in the gym. So prior to, you know, when they, when we were in hybrid, we had about sixty kids sitting in the gym, six feet apart, but it, it was an area that I was not comfortable with because I had no way of tracking who was sitting next to who. And for contact tracing, it wasn't, it wasn't the best that I feel that we could do. So we're going to be using a, um, a program coming up called silent dismissal and it's pretty cool. Um, because basically what it is, is the numbers that all the parents have, they'll still display them on their car window. And, uh, Ms. Foss probably because she's the one that is out there or Ms. Rilla will go out with their phone or an iPad and they enter the number on the phone and it pops into the teacher's classroom on their uh, whiteboard and the kids are notified that their family is here and then they walk out. So what it does is it eliminates congregating sixty students in a gym. And that's one of the concerns as we go full remote, that's double. I have to have a hundred and twenty students. I need to make sure they're not all sitting in a gym. So this gives us a socially distanced, um, uh, dismissal. Um, and so the next couple of weeks, as we roll through with it, you know, there will be a couple of hiccups that will work out, just like we're learning a new system, but I feel much better implementing this so that we don't have to, um, corral sixty kids sitting in a gym and trying to maintain, uh, six feet of social distancing. So that'll be coming up and the families will be hearing about that. There's nothing on their part they need to do that's any different other than just please make sure that their numbers are clearly displayed. We'll just be entering them into a phone and it goes straight to the classrooms. Kids are notified and out they come. So that's pretty much it for us.
Thanks. Sorry, I clicked on the wrong button like three times. Um, questions for Wendy? Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate all your work. Hope that the next few weeks go smoothly for you. Um, and we will move on to agenda, uh, agenda item number eight, which is policy review. Um, so we kind of discussed a little bit last time about a different way to attack this. So, um, Miss- Kathy has kind of divided these things up into things that we need to take care of and then other. Um, and we had discussed approving some of these as batches possibly. So I guess for now, if we want to focus on the three at the top that say they require action at this meeting, I've got a couple of notes, but I'll open it up to Jean and Ann first.
Andy, do you mind if I, I say something before we start?
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to point out, um, we've had GBDB, the non-certified, um, benefit package on there. And it was listed under required for action because it's been more than three readings, but we're not really ready to do anything with that because the para contract hasn't been ratified because that policy applies to all non-certified staff and they'll be having a CBA that will be different than this. So if we can just hold that one and keep it on the agenda for now, that would be great.
Yep, that was, that was one of my questions. Okay, so EH B or GBD? Jean or Ann, any comments on those?
Um, actually Andy, on that one that Patty was talking about, the GBDB, the thing that I had a really big concern with is number eight, the bereavement days of only three. And I know most businesses give five. I, I can't imagine only getting three days. You know, your spouse passes away on a Sunday, you know, how are you going to go to work on that Thursday? So, is that something that we can look at later Patty with the, with the para contract?
Yes. So that is part of the para contract. So when that does come to be ratified, that, that's going to be part of what's in the contract. It's also in the teacher contract. It's three days, but it can be two additional days can be granted if asked for. And then when we do this policy for all those staff members not covered by a CBA, it's, we can certainly make that adjustment so that it's the same for everyone.
Yeah, I just think three is way too, too small, but thank you.
Agreed.
The other one I had, um, no issues with is EH B, the data record retention.
Yep, I'm good with that one too.
And I just had one question on GBD. I'm sorry, these are a mouthful. When reading through this, I didn't see anything that was pointed out, but it could be just me. When we're discussing the board members to the staff, there wasn't anything about with board members are attending the schools for their student, like a play, a concert, or the teacher's con- conference. Does that come under, under just, you know, private discussions in social interactions?
Yes, that would not be covered under this policy. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the only thing I had. Thank you.
Okay, um, I had something to mull over for GBD. Um, I've been kind of going back and forth with it. And I don't know the wording and I don't know if somebody wants to suggest wording or what. I think on its face, I agree with the notion that staff communication to the board should come through, um, the superintendent, right? But I, I have a little bit of a hesitation with that because I feel it limits in some ways. Uh, I, I guess I want to categorize it because many of our teachers or staff are also community members and any, any member of the Pembroke community, um, or even the extended PA community can certainly reach out to this board without going through Patty. So, you know, if, if a teacher lives here in Pembroke and wants to contact the board, um, as long, it's my feeling that as long as it's not specifically related to their job, it seems a little bit exclusionary, if that's a word, to require that communication to go through Patty if it's, if it's not something about their job. I would like to see this, it doesn't have to be done tonight. I'd, I'd be fine with, um, you know, approving this tonight and revisiting it when we get this backlog of policies down a little bit. But I, I would like to see it worded in such a way that, you know, if they have communicate, if they want to communicate with the board and it doesn't have something to do with something that impacts their job specifically, that the rules for those people should be just as they are for any other citizen.
Andy, I agree.
Would you like me to take a step at the language?
Sure, if you can do something right now, then, and we can make a motion, that'd be great.
I didn't mean right now, but I can.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. If you want to bring that to us, um, I mean, other than that, I'm perfectly okay with this. So if we could, if we could get some wording around that, um, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this, um, next time around. And I think based on Ann's comment before, I will go ahead and make a motion that we, um, approve EH B as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, then on a roll call vote to approve, um, policy EH B records retention policy. Um, Gene?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So that one's good. We'll wait on GBDB. I am personally okay with. Well, I didn't hear your question Sandy, sorry.
Sorry, I forgot the other one was on.
I didn't hear what you asked.
That seconded?
Uh, I think.
Yes, Ann.
Thank you.
Um, I, I am prepared to accept the three, um, JLCF wellness, EBBB accident reports and JLCD dash R administration medication to students, which are the only ones that are on a second reading right now. Um, I'm ready to accept those as written if you guys are.
Was that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion as a batch to approve JLCF EBBB and JLCD dash R.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, then on another short roll call vote, um, for J, I'll read the names one more time. Policy JLCF wellness, policy EBBB accident reports and policy JLCD dash R administration medication to students. Roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the, um, which one is it? The accident report. Um, the, what I had in my notes here is, um, I don't see anything here where the, the parents are notified. Did I miss it?
I'm pulling up, am I muted? I'm pulling it up right now. That's the wrong one. I thought.
Cause it says a general accident reporting in school playground or school sponsored activity. And my other question in that, in A is, what about on the busing? Or is that reported just to the busing company? We don't get notified.
So this, um, I, I could be wrong and Patty, if you have, uh, an idea of this, the way I read this was this was just more of when, when an accident report has to be filled out and not what that accident report looks like. And I'm assuming the accident report would, would specify, hey, you have to send this here and send this there. Patty, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, this is, um, recommended because we are required to fill out an accident report for our insurance company and that is, that is the guidance in this document. So it's not a procedure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, I'm all set with the, um, I vote yes on the motion.
Okay, Gene?
Yes, yes.
And I'm yes. So that's a couple checked off. Um, and we've got a bunch of first readings on there. So, if anybody has read all of those or has questions on any of those, we could, we could discuss them now if people are ready. Or we can move those up the list for next time around.
Um, Andy, I make a motion to move them up to the list. I do have quite a few questions on them, but I'm sure that, um, Amy would be able to assist me on those questions. So I would make a motion to move those to the second reading.
Okay, um, I'll second, I guess, since there's a motion. Gene, you want to discuss that or are we okay?
Well, yes.
Okay, me too. Uh, Ann?
Yes.
All right. So, um, Ann, if there's, if there's particular ones that you think might be a little bit longer discussion, um, if you want to shoot me an email, before we make the next agenda, I'll make sure that those, I, I don't know if we'll tackle all whatever eight or nine of those next time. But if you've got particular ones, you've got questions and I can make sure those get on the list to discuss next time around so that we can, um, so we can discuss them.
Thank you.
If it's okay, Ann, do you mind just copying me on those two in case it's something I need to reach out to the schools to make sure you have the answers before the meeting?
Oh yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay, then that brings us to agenda item number nine, informational items. Nothing. All right. Okay, everybody, everybody's still groggy from the holidays. Um, okay, so that brings us to public comment. Again, um, I just want to make a quick note about the rest of the agenda, um, because it's a little bit different than what people may have seen before, in case people are trying to make a decision about whether or not they're going to stick around. So after public comment, we do have non-public session, um, and then a couple, a couple of formalities. And then there's a recess for a non-meeting and a reconvene. So just in case you're wondering what that is, we've had a couple of them lately, um, but a non-meeting is, it's weird. I still don't fully understand it, but basically it has to do with us discussing some things, um, that are not appropriate for non-public. But need to be discussed and if April were here, she'd tell you the RSA that actually defines it for you. But that's what it's about. It's, it's a discussion that we have to have that's different than non-public. So if you're wondering what that is, that's all it is. So anyway, agenda number 10, public comments. Um, we'll open it up again. Um, it's, we'll call it eight 59. We'll try to stick as close to that 15 minutes as we can. Um, so same deal as before. Yeah, we'll look at computer hands first. And then we'll move on to the folks that are left on the phone to see if any of you want to contribute. So if you want to raise your hand on the computer, um, we'll take some comments. There's one, um, Tammy? Tammy Sanjan, I think you're good. Can anybody hear Tammy? I can't hear her. Tammy, I'm not sure if you're talking, but we can't hear you. I'm going to move on to Melanie Camello and Tammy, I'll circle back to you in a couple of minutes and see if we can hear you again. Um, so Melanie, if you want to go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, um, I know you can't really answer a question, but I was just searching and maybe you could reiterate. There was some talk about what school could look like in different models if there was a full in and that there was a file of social distance at six feet, three feet. I can't find it anywhere. If somebody could repeat where that is. And then just something for the board to keep in mind about vaccines, they're, they are trying, um, they're rolling them out. It is bumpy at best. Not all the long-term care residents have their vaccines yet either. It's going to take time. If you listen to the governor's press conference today, longer than a lot of us wanted. And the question was asked, once you get your two doses of vaccine and they did talk about teachers and school nurses. You can't really relax your PPE guidelines. It's still unknown whether you can still transmit the virus, even if you've gotten your vaccine. So I just caution and hopefully as we go forward, just the board looking at that for the safety concerns of not only our students, but all our staff members, even if they have a vaccine, if we're talking about no socially distanced classrooms. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. I, I will address just because it's good public information. Patty, has that document been made available to the community yet, or is it just in our drive?
No, it was posted right after the next meeting. So I think I will try, um, and put a link in my update that I send out via one call now so that people can get right to it easily. But it should be on the school board website, but if Melanie's having a hard time finding it, then we need to make sure it's easier.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, it looks like you're unmuted again. Do you want to give another shot? I still got nothing. All right, Tammy, I'm going to move on to Tim Girardi. And I'll give you one more shot, Tammy, after, after he's done.
Thanks, Andy. So, um, I think I downloaded the right copy, but Patty, I'll look for your, um, link to, uh, what the plan is, just to confirm I downloaded the right one. Um, you know, we'll give some good feedback, um, on this and hopefully other parents will as well. So thank you for putting this together. Um, first pass through, again, if I'm looking at the right one is it would be good if we could see kind of the, uh, the financial impact of the dollars that, uh, that are quoted in here. So, you know, that would be a request that I would make, uh, for this. But other than that, thank you for the plan and, um, you know, look forward to giving some feedback and having some good discussion about things.
Thanks, Tim. Um, I don't see Tammy's hand anymore, so we'll give her another minute and we do still have a few people on the phones. So if you are called in and you want to contribute to public comment, go ahead and hit star six and I should see you unmute and can recognize you to speak. I feel like I stole Dan's job, but whatever it is with the latest version, I can, the people, when they raise their hand, pop right up to the top of the list and I can see them. But I couldn't before, so it's a little bit easier. So not seeing anybody on the phone. I do see Tammy's hands back up and she is unmuted. Tammy Sanjan, can you, can we hear you? I can't, I'm sorry. Um, if, if you've got something that you want to share, um, you can email it to me and I can share it next time around. Um, or if you've got another suggestion, that's great. I'm sorry that we can't hear you.
Andy, do we have a chat feature?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think it's disabled.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy, if you want to shoot me an email right now, um, I can, you know, after non-public, I can check my email and see if I've got it and I, and I can read it out loud at that point. So I think that's how I'll leave it. If you've got a minute and you want to type something up and send it to me, I'll put a note on my agenda right now to check my email after non-public. Sorry, I think that's the best that I can do. So not seeing anybody unmuted on the phones, not seeing any more hands. The board has need to go into non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letters A and C. A is the dismissal, promotion, compensation or disciplining of an employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her. And small letter C is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a board member. So on a roll call vote to enter non-public at nine oh four, Ann?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So. Okay, so we had a little bit of business in there. So agenda item number 12, uh, we do have one retirement. Uh, so I need a motion for that, sorry.
And I, I motion that we approve the, uh, retirement as requested by staff member.
Thank you. Uh, I'll second. I don't get to very much. Any discussion? Well, I guess we had discussion, so I'll move right to the question. So on a roll call vote to approve the retirement request, Gene?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right. And we had one other piece of business we can take care of if someone desires.
I make a motion to accept the consent item as presented.
All right, um, I'll second. And so, uh, on a roll call vote to approve the leave request, Gene?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you, thank you. Um, so now we're going to do another recess for a non-meeting, which I kind of talked about earlier. So this will be handled the same way as a non-public was. You'll get moved out to a waiting room and you'll be back with us in a few minutes if you decide to hold on. Thanks for hanging in there.
Okay, I'm going to pause the recording.
Cause what if we change the flex days? Cause what if we change the flex days?
Is that everybody?
So Andy, I'm not sure how you want to handle that, but we, we can't really discuss it until it's ratified. So that any further discussion about the document would need to happen in non-meeting.
Right.
So if we just, if we ratify it, is that, that we're accepting it?
Yes.
Oh, darn.
Um, so I guess then the question is, do we have a motion to that effect?
Andy, I, I think I can answer Ann's question kind of benignly, that if. Something changes. To affect what she asked, then that's based on the models that we're using at that point in time. So if that, your question, to answer your question, I don't think it will be impacted until we actually change the model.
But it listed all three models. Yeah, sorry, I missed the boat on that one. Thanks, Jean.
No worries. Okay, um, so Patty, could you say the full name of this thing again, so I don't get it wrong? Just because the agenda's wrong, I want to make sure that uh, anybody that's still listening understands.
Sure, it is the memorandum of agreement between the school board and the Education Association of Pembroke.
Thank you. Um, so do we have a motion tonight to ratify?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. And I guess we can't really have discussion, so we'll move right to a roll call vote. Um, Ann?
No.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Um, so that is ratified. And that brings us to agenda item number sixteen. I'll accept the motion to adjourn after I say that our next scheduled meeting is January the nineteenth at six thirty PM.
Uh, Andy, can I just ask you a question?
Uh, sure.
So how would the, how would the residents know what we just voted on?
Um, so this will, I assume, become a public document now that it's ratified. Is that correct, Patty?
Yes, it's um, now subject to the right to know law and is a public document now.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Andy, at the next meeting, um, I may be late, well, I will be late. The selectmen are also meeting that evening.
Okay.
So I'll come as soon as I can close out the meeting.
You're in, you're out.
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second. This is Ann.
All right. Uh, motion to adjourn at nine twenty-three on a roll call vote. Um, Ann, I almost said Amber. Thank you, Jean.
Yes, but I'm sure Amber will be jumping up and down to get out of here too.
All right, and I'm yes. Thanks, everybody. Thanks to the public that hung in there all night. Enjoy your weeks.
Thank you.
Good night.